Call, people, and attempts to silence their cell phones, please. Include it with myself. And please don't ruin the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's ten o'clock up. Can you see any additions?
We have two additions. A resolution for uncollectible property taxes. And I need to give an update on that.
Do we know if David is going to be?
He is. He should be here in twenty seconds.
Then I'll open it up for public comment. Alando, you mentioned you have.
Yeah, okay. Okay, Dad's not here?
No, he's in DC, your son.
Oh, okay. Well, what I wanted to do was, Monday I looked at your agenda. It noted that you guys are going to jail for today. So I was timing for a response that I had written up. And I wanted to pass this out. The first one, is a letter that James Ross and I sent to the sheriff back in June of 2015. And we haven't received any response to that. But just for your information, there were some items in there that were brought up. You might want to check in the host today when you're out there. And then I have a letter.
Now, this potentially specific to the jail?
To the jail, yeah. It's all jail. And here's another letter. My letter for today is basically some items. An inmate, a former inmate, a recent inmate spoke to me about some concerns. Nothing major, but, you know, things they need getting care of. And yes, in my opinion. And some of these look like, well, one of them looks like maybe you folks are already on top of them. But I'll just go through these real quick. Some concerns they mentioned.
Which one are you referring to? This or this one?
Yes. For most reason, one of the cases.
By that team.
Yeah. So something to look at while you're out there. Uh, so it says here, "Some of the shower stalls may have mold present." I know you're replacing two of the shower stalls. I don't know, maybe that's why. Okay, this other fellow said, "There was a concern that the jail clothing appeared not to be as clean as in the past." The other one was that the overhead lighting may be brighter than necessary. Inmates use towels to tone down the extreme overhead lighting. There were people saying that, hey, you know, you go in there and it's clarity. You know, and it's unnecessary that people use towels to.
Is that in the showers or in the jail?
In the cells.
In the cells.
Yeah, in the cells, yeah. The other one they mentioned was, uh, there's a heating duct or pipe in one of the cells. It might be what they call the blood tank. And it would've been in there, so I don't know what. So he's talking about, produces a sound, I guess, continually, which makes it impossible to sleep at night. But it does that all, you know, twenty-four hours a day. The other one was, uh, that methane gas, sewer gases, at times are being pushed, maybe being pushed, or are being pushed back through the jail cell drains. And questionnaires, are there adequate gas traps in place? Or do any even exist? And again, you know, it's not, they're not life-threatening, but they are health-threatening. Okay? This person went in there healthy, came out ill because of the sewer gases and some other things.
That's correlation, but not proven fact.
Well, not a proven fact, but, you know, you caught something in there. There's some other things in there that you can look at that we've asked for before. Some contracts, inmate guides that we've asked for. And then on being made public, why? And then the last thing I put in there, and I'm going to push that, is basically, I again encourage you to explore the relocation of the sheriff's office in the county jail to a location adjacent to the order pre-correction site. And I've been, I mentioned that before, and it was put back in here. But I wanted to bring that, to your, these things to your attention. And then the letter that we sent the sheriff back in June of 2015 that mentions some items. And one thing on that letter to the sheriff, number one, it says, "The open space used for body searches of both men and women." To our surprise, Officer Havel mentioned that a curtain had only been added within the last three years or so. Okay, I checked into that. Local, even statewide, around the United States or whatever. But there's been some suits bought by inmates, probably any female inmates, where the search area allowed other, allowed males to see what was going on. Whether it was a curtain or whatever, it was out in the open. And they filed suit, and they won. You know, hundreds of thousands or millions, you know, I mean, millions. But yeah, because it says, hey, you know, you're giving a body search out here where everyone can see what's going on. That's all right. So anyway, I don't know if that's the situation here or not, but you might ask about that. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Alando. Uh, jail, I'm the sheriff, is here. You'll follow up and get the report back to the county commissioner. Any other questions? If not, then we'll go to, we have ten ten jail tour. Let's, we'll go to, uh, the business, Thomas Creek, West Side, move our annexation request.
You, are Dave here? Could we run through and get him out of here?
He's down there.
These are the addition.
I keep forgetting the additions down there, Dave. I apologize. Yeah, let's catch the late additions.
I, I think it's going to be relatively fast, possibly.
This should go short. Can you, can I get you up there?
I was thinking the other day.
Come on, Alando. Come on.
Come on, Alando. All right. Today I'm representing the assessor's office. Last year, we've been cleaning up a lot of manufactured home issues and problems. We have a lot of destroyed homes that were still on the tax roll, have been gone for years and so on. We have one last one that's kind of been hanging in the woodwork we're trying to get rid of. So the assessor's office is requesting cancellation of property taxes on a manufactured home. Did you guys get a handout on this?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So, um, basically, a party, a lot of manufactured home from a private party. We'll call it, the buyer is A, and the seller is B. The seller signed the title over, relinquished it. The buyer never put it in his name, never transferred ownership or title. So it was never in his name to begin with.
So it was never recorded, so it was never recorded. Owner, but not the record.
However, he had it set up so that he was a contract buyer and taxpayer in the office. But as far as the lowest of the state tracking system, he was never on. Um, in the course of this, in February 2013, July of 2013, the buyer was sentenced in court law and confined. And August eighth, just following that, the, there was a third person that came in, we'll call him a defendant, C, was awarded a settlement from the buyer of $200,000. Then later on, on February 29th, the defendant was awarded all the property of the buyer. So currently, this manufactured home is sitting on the defendant's property. And we're trying to get title to the defendant. And in order to do that, we need to relinquish these taxes. The buyer has no means or way to generate the tax, to pay these taxes. This is a 1979 older mobile home. It is not in good condition. These taxes, over fifty percent of the value of these taxes are warrants and interest and fees. And I did a reappraisal on it and cut the value of the home almost in half. It hadn't been reappraised over ten years. And new folks have it, but it's trashed. So, but that's, we would like to get those forgiven, get this transferred to the defendant, and get this thing back on the tax roll and generating income.
I'll just, I'll add to that, that what you're looking at is, C is the party that we want to be the record owner and responsible going forward. C got every interest, all the property that B owned. Since B never recorded the title when they purchased it from A, A is still the record owner. So what we do is get A to transfer their title to C. C already has everything that B had, and then it'll all be joined together in C and tidied up that way. And then you can proceed with the normal process for ownership and collecting taxes.
I see. So we, we have to do a petition in order to make this happen. So, um, and David, come talk to me. I think I'll talk to you individually. Know a little bit of history about this. And this, and thank you, we've been cleaning these up for quite some time. I'm, I'm ready to move forward. If you are, Commissioner. I'll make a motion to, in the matter of the cancellation of delinquent personal property taxes, approve petition as presented.
I'll second the motion, any other discussion? Here or not? All in place?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, my next motion would be, uh, in the matter of cancellation of delinquent personal property taxes to accept the order as written.
I'll second. Any other discussion? Basically, person A sold it to B. It never got transferred.
It got transferred.
And person B never paid the taxes.
Correct.
And then the court gave it to C. And we still have on the table back taxes that needs to be addressed and not the responsibility of either of the parties.
We cannot transfer ownership to the taxes or result. And this will account with that. And we have the documents written up, and party C is ready to sign and go forward with it. And so we're just, this is just a step in the process.
Okay, on the table is a motion, cancellation of delinquent personal property taxes. All in place?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, David.
Thank you, guys.
You will be making a phone call here shortly to the lady in prison, Alando.
I will.
Thank you very much. Okay, sure.
Is the acting, E.T.?
Acting.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if you'd indulge me, uh, before we do the jail tour, is it okay if I, I would like to make a comment. I'd like to acknowledge, uh, undersheriff Havel is here. Last Friday, I went to his graduation in Salem. Twelve weeks, sixteen weeks. Came home two times in sixteen weeks. Quite a commitment. He's, I believe, the oldest in his class. Uh, there was, there's normally forty in the class. This had forty plus one because of one person got to come in that I don't know in particular. So they're all forty-one graduated. But I'd like to acknowledge that Mr. Havel received the outstanding, Defensive Tactics Award. It was a surprise to him. And they only gave out three extra awards, I believe, and Mr. Havel received one of those. So I'd like to acknowledge that today in the meeting until, thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
I'll second that appreciation. Andrew Paul, thank you. I don't know about to rest around there. This is for gentlemen. How's the master? Cover the. Should we take the tour and come back?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that, I think that state sees waiting on us. As a matter of fact, for sure.
Okay.
But we just continue the meeting up through there. No actually distance, only for us, no publics invited. So I guess we recess and come back to the appropriate room.
Yeah. Yeah, noted that it recesses, we'll come back to the.
Do I need to hand deliver these? You, Paul.
Thomas Creek Westside.
You want me to speak? Okay, so we received a letter from Thomas Creek Westside requesting annexation be accepted for Mr. and Mrs. Brett Smith for their property on Odegaard Road. And they confirm with legal counsel that this is held through proper process. I would still require your consideration. Don Dieter with rule buyer protection is here, so if you have any questions or if he has a comment. Mr. Dieter, do you have anything that you want to add for them?
No, I'm just there to find out if you're gonna approve it.
If we're gonna grant it or not.
So, legal counsel does everything appropriate, he emailed back from you and he's thinking some order.
Yes, our review is to make sure that the process for this petition was followed and it follows organ loss, so it's before you appropriately for your decision.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to accept the annexation request from Thomas Creek Westside and require protection district as presented.
I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? Is it just taken on one residence or larger two? As far as I know, it's just more. And that one is adjacent, so it can be taken into account, so. Anything else to question?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
I would like to carry it. Appreciate you coming.
I'll get that recorded with the clerk and information will be given to the assessor's office so they can update their records.
Okay, I'll tell three. Thank you.
Media minutes before their fleet auction.
Okay, so just a quick update on fleet auction. I did go to the food vendors meeting last week and one of the vendors there was from GovDeals.com. I would like to use this site to do our auction rather than the one previously presented. This site actually has a 10% fee that is automatically charged to the buyer rather than to the seller. And they come out, they do all the pictures, all the advertising, everything needed for the auction. They can help us set reserves and everything on it. I think it will work better for the units that we're selling this year since we have not just standard vehicles that we're selling. So, they also reach more buyers than any others.
For the audience and news media, current process has been this and this would give us this.
Our previous process has always been to hold local auction at road department or wherever. We advertise as best we can, but we get eight to 10 buyers generally for those auctions. And our vehicles are great deals for our buyers, which is awesome, but we are selling public property, so it would be nice to.
And this avenue being proposed, it would be on the internet, somebody from Maine across the country.
Anywhere from Lakeview to Maine.
So, this was already approved in the commissioners meeting, this is just your updating us that you would like to use.
A different site.
Different site. So, do we need to just consensus?
Consensus is yeah.
Yeah.
I can agree.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Media minutes.
Okay, we have six sets, we could approve five of them. I was absent on the April 20th. Have you had to regimul?
Last of them yesterday.
Okay.
He's up to be confirmed.
So, I'll move to approve April 5th, April 6th, April 19th, May 4th, May 3rd, May 4th, 2016 as presented.
Second. Any other discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
And please note we wanted that.
April 20th, I was absent from, so.
Carry it forward.
Carry it forward.
Technically, we could vote on it. It could be a court.
Okay.
And you could make the motion, you would abstain, and the motion would presumably pass one nothing.
I could make the motion, take a second, but you would need to abstain from the vote.
Right. You could, just point of order.
I recommend carrying it forward.
That's messy minutes.
Or if you want me to do it.
Or anything more important, I would recommend against during the House of Justice.
Well, retain that one with every other session is back. Linger, I'm stake, linger, I pay for the open session.
None, we have one for executive session.
And that would be under?
H.
H.
Litigation, potential litigation.
Then, if there's nothing else for public, I'll go into executive. One minute past 11. The folks remaining would be legal counsel, commissioners assistant. Jimmy, you may retain if you so wish without.